Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Thursday, July 28, 2022, and 6:30 PM. Actually, 6:34 PM. And we will call the meeting to order with Mr. Toth. Can you do roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Tsai. Mr. Grippo.
Yes.
Dr. Hopkins. Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Maris.
Here.
Mr. Shabon.
Look, he just walked in.
Oh, thanks, Bill. Mr. Shabon. Dr. Smith.
Here.
Coming back to Dr. Hopkins is here. And Vice President Singh.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. And can you also read the Open Public Meetings Act, please?
Yes. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975(c)(231) Sunshine Law, copies of this public meeting notice were sent to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, the Star-Ledger, the Franklin Reporter, Tap into Franklin Township, Franklin Township Clerk Manager, District Schools, Offices and Associations, PTO Presidents, and Post on our District Website.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to go into confidential session, please?
Seconded.
Moved by Mr. Grippo and seconded by Mr. Shabon. All in favor?
Aye.
We are going into confidential session. Motion to adjourn to confidential session for the purpose of discussing confidential matters, including a workers' compensation settlement, a special education settlement, and a personnel matter. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Thank you. We'll be back. Good evening. It is still Thursday, July 28, 2022, and we're at 7:35 PM. We just came back from confidential session. We went in for the purpose of discussing confidential matters, including a workers' compensation settlement, a special education settlement, and a personnel matter. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Mike, can you lead us with the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, of the God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Bill, could you lead us? Could you read the mission statement, please?
The mission statement of the Franklin Township Public Schools. Franklin Township Public Schools embraces its diversity, fosters excellent educational innovation, and empowers all students to achieve their highest potential.
Thank you. Just for the information of the public, I am running the meeting today because President La Court had undergone a surgery today, so she is home resting and will be back with us next month. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Dr. Hopkins, seconded by Lori. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is adopted. Do we have a student representative online? No? Okay. Thank you. At the beach. So we have our superintendents' report next.
Thank you. Superintendent's Report, July 2022, Summer Academic Programming. Today was the last day of our extended school year, and in the next week or so, we'll be wrapping up all of our summer academic programming. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the many who contributed to making our summer programs a huge success. We had lots of students, we had lots of fun, and lots of learning. Progress on summer projects. Mr. McNamara, Supervisor of B&amp;G, along with our maintenance and custodial staff are making good progress on summer projects, including the annual summer cleaning. Now that the summer academic program is coming to an end, the crew will make even greater headway toward getting our schools ready for our opening on September 7. Safety and security. With the recent news on the Uvalde school shooting, I'm certain school safety is on everyone's mind. Please know, I remind you, school safety remains a top priority for the district and for the board. To learn more on what the board has been able to accomplish in recent years with regard to improving safety and security in and around our schools, I encourage you to refer to the May 25 letter that I prepared toward the end of the school year last year. You can still read it online, and it highlights many of the things we've been working on. In addition, Mr. Wilson, who's our Director of School Management, has been working in recent weeks with our local police department to even further tighten procedures, visit schools, identify areas that they want to tighten things up on a bit, and they've been working through that. So we'll be ready for September. We will provide another update later in August at the August Board Meeting as to where we stand, and we are excited to get our school year going, and we hope it will be a more traditional and more normal school year. So that's it for us. Thanks.
Thank you. For the Board President's Report, I have the Board Vice President's Report. It's very short. I would like all of us to join me in a moment of silence. Since we last met as a group, we have become aware of the passing of three former members of our district family. Mrs. Maureen Manning served the district as the Assistant Business Administrator from September of 2006 till her retirement in August of 2018. She passed away earlier this month. Earlier this week, we also learned of the tragic death of two graduates of the high school class of 2021. We have been informed that Gabrianna Andrews suddenly passed away on July 9, and Nelson Delarosa Peralta was the victim of a fatal crash on Eastern Avenue on July 21. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the families of these three warriors at this most difficult Thank you. I would like to get a motion for comments from the public, to open for comments from the public, five minutes per speaker, on agenda items only.
So moved.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Lori. All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the public is now open on agenda items only. If you are attending remotely, please press *5 to get in the queue.
See, no comments from the president. I believe we close the vote of session. Johnny? Unless there's something on the phone?
Nope.
So seconded.
Okay. Motion to close public comment by Bill, seconded by Dr. Hopkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Comments from the public is now closed, and we'll move on to committee and liaison reports. Can we start with Nishita? Do you have a committee report? Lori?
If I may, I'll start with curriculum. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting was held Monday, July 11 via Zoom Conference. It opened at 6:00 PM. In attendance were myself, Lori Maris as Chair, Ms. Nishita Desai, Mr. Sammy Shabon, and Ms. Nancy La Court ex officio, and Dr. Daniel Longren. The committee agreed to move the following proposals forward to the board for consideration. A dissertation study. New Jersey School Counselor Evaluation Model Study through Keene University was discussed. This proposed study examines the New Jersey School Counselor Evaluation Model rubrics and their alignment to school counselors' work. Training. The Fundamentals of Restorative Practices, August 1 through 3 on 2022. The cost of this training would be $12,700. This is a train-the-trainer opportunity for school leaders who will help us adopt restorative practices elements in our district schools. And then we discuss the summer program. Connections Mentor Training for Students in Grades 11 and 12 to Prepare for a Summer Mentoring Camp for Rising Grade 7 and 8 Grade Students. Mentor Training will take place on August 3 through 4, while Connections Camp will take place from August 8 through 12 at Franklin High School. The committee also discussed the following item. The Curriculum Update. Summer Curriculum Revisions are ongoing and will be presented to the committee for support at our next meeting. The meeting closed at approximately 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Like Mr. Grippo, I also have to put on my glasses. This could be a correlation and not a causation since joining the board, but... Okay. The Facilities Technology Transportation and Committee Report met on this Tuesday, July 26 of this year, 2022, at 6 o'clock remotely. In attendance were myself as Chair, Dr. Hopkins, Mr. Jackson, Dr. Ravalley, Mr. Toth, Mr. Banano, Ms. Betchy, Mr. Coretta, Mr. Ellis, and Mr. McNamara. Actually, I don't think Joe was on there. I'll have to fix that. The first thing we talked about was energy, where Mr. Ellis provided the committee with the status on the Clermont Solar Array. Mr. Ellis advised that the board had a payment of $21,584, which was received for the sale of the most recent renewable energy credit. The total sold to date is 51,984. So those are the T-Rex. There were capital projects discussed. Paving is scheduled to be done at SGS and Elizabeth Avenue. The asbestos floor removal and replacement is ongoing at Hillcrest, Connerly, and McAfee. SGS is waiting for the delivery of two rooftop units for the heating and ventilation and air conditioning. Renovations to the Life Skills Lab at the Hamilton Street campus are complete. Apparently, it's very modern. The Building and the Grounds Office project will be put out to bid in September. And for project change orders, there are none, which is fantastic. Our meeting adjourned at 6:30.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm reporting on the Policy Committee, which we met on July 11, 2022. In attendance were myself as Committee Chair, Mr. Bill Grippo, Ms. Lori Maris, Ms. Nancy La Court ex officio, and Ms. Mary Clark. The committee members reviewed and discussed the draft of a new policy on the use of handheld metal detectors. This policy would allow, if passed, the use of handheld metal detectors, wands, for entrance to school buildings, school-sponsored events, or on school grounds on and as needed basis, and after consultation with appropriate law enforcement agencies. The committee members had several questions about the implementation of the policy and whether other local districts had similar policies. The committee tabled the discussion of this policy until their August meeting so that more information could be gathered. The committee reviewed and agreed to pass on to the full board for consideration the following revised regulations. Regulation 5.111, the eligibility of resident/ non-resident students, and Regulation 9.320, the cooperation with law enforcement agencies. These revised regulations coincide with revised policies already approved by the board at previous meetings. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you. Dr. Hopkins, do you have a committee or a liaison report?
Only if I could go on, if Mike allowed me, is finance. Want me to go with finance? I mean, I'm sorry. Forgive my... That's Walters. There you go. I'm trying to give Mike everything.
I would have said yes. The Finance Committee met on this past Tuesday, July 26, at 6:30 PM remotely. In attendance was myself as Chair, Dr. Dennis Hopkins, Dr. Michael Smith, Dr. John Ravalley, Jonathan Toth, Ms. Jackie Betchy, Brian Banano, and Riot Ellis. We talked about the bills list and financials. The committee reviewed the bills list for the month of June, and the board's secretaries' report, transfer report, bank reconciliation, and void check report for the prior month. Contracts. The committee discussed the award of contracts for technology services, professional services, and student transportation service for physical year 2023. Charter payment, July and August total, $3,015,494,000. The meeting ended at 7:00 PM. That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, do you have a committee or liaison report?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
There's no security meeting. Next month.
Next month. Okay. Okay. So I will read the Personnel and Negotiations Committee. The Personnel and Negotiations Committee met on July 20. The meeting began at 6:00 PM. Members of the committee present were myself as Chair, Walter Jackson, Sammy Shabon, Nancy La Court, Dr. Ravalley, Brian Banano, and Jackie Schneider. The committee reviewed and discussed the following items. The Personnel Report, July 28, 2022, Number 1. The report had appointments that include new staff members for the school year 2022-2023, paraprofessionals, teachers, and secretaries. Stipends appointments include mentoring stipends, special Olympic staff, PBS coaches, translators, to name a few. Policy 7.650. School Vehicle Assignments Use, Tracking, Maintenance, and Accounting. Mr. Banano reviewed this policy. A board agenda item appears recommending approval of the assignment of district vehicles to two district employees. These employees are required to report to the district after hours if needed. Limited CE/CEAS Pilot. The Department of Education's rollout of limited certificate of eligibility and certificate of eligibility with advanced standing five-year pilot program. The benefit and parameters were reviewed. International Teach Alliance Group LLC Host School Agreement. On the agenda is a contract for approval with International Teach Alliance Group. This is an alternative staffing avenue for teaching positions. This contract would provide the opportunity for foreign certified teachers on J-1 visas to become New Jersey certified and teach. MetLife Voluntary Benefits. Mr. Banano advised that we are exploring additional voluntary benefit offerings for all staff members. Workers' Compensation Settlement. Mr. Banano reviewed the workers' compensation settlement request on the agenda tonight. For the good of the order, Mr. Banano reviewed update on Chapter 44 Information. The Personnel Committee meeting was rescheduled to August 17 from August 10. The meeting ended around 7:00 PM. And now we are on to new business.
I make a motion to move. R1 Monthly Reports, M1 Minutes of Board Meetings, A1 Travel and Related Expense Reimbursements, A2 Affirm Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullion Decisions, A3 Student Safety Data Report, A4 Code of Conduct, A5 Revised Policies, Second Reading, A6 Revised Regulations Adoptions, A7 Facilities Use, A8 Assignment of District Vehicle, A9 IDEA Grant, A10 Special Education Settlement, A11 Zoo Fall Health Service Agreement, A12 NJ DOE Limited CE/CEAS Pilot Program Participation, B1 Warrant and Payrolls, B2 Financial Reports, B3 Contract Approval, A through U, B4 Change Orders, None at This Time, B5 Donation, B6 Lease Purchase Financing, B7 Award of Lease Purchase Bid, B8 School Breakfast, Lunch, and Milk Prices, 2022-2023 School Year, B9 Physical Year 2023 Insurance Policies, B10 Authorized the Use of Competitive Contracting, B11 Award of Bid Transportation Student to and From Revision, B12 Head Start Expanded Program, B13 Head Start Enhanced Program, B14 State Aid, B15 Deferred Compensation, B16 Third-Party Administrator, B17 Employee Health Center, B... I'm sorry. C1 Out-of-District Student School Year 2021-2022, C2 Field Trip Destinations, C3 Field Trip Applications, C4 Athletic Ticket Pricing 2022-2023, C5 FHS and FMS Athletic Schedules, C6 NJSIAA Fall Session Start Dates, C7 New Jersey School Counselor Evaluation Model Study, C8 Restoration Practices PD, C9 Summer School Offerings and Programs 2022, C10 ESEA Consolidation Grant Funds for Physical Year 2023, C11 ESEA Consolidation Grant Fund Application for Physical Year 2023, P1 Workers' Comp Settlement, P2 Personal Report Number 1, dated July 28, 2022. And that is it?
So there is a motion for R1, M1, A1 through A12, B1 to B17, C1 to C11, P1 to P2. Can I get a second, please? Seconded by Bill. Any questions? Mike?
Yeah, I do have a question. On A1, the Zoo Fall Health Service Agreement, on page 6, Article 5 says "Health Emergencies." I just picked it up this time that I read it and was thinking about what would happen here. So it says, "In the case of a health emergency on district property outside of the school-based health center, Zoo Fall and its healthcare providers shall not be responsible for providing first aid and shall not be the first line of response. The district shall be responsible for responding to health emergencies outside of the school-based health center in accordance with district policy and procedure." I guess my question here is, you know, it says "shall not be the first line of response, but does this preclude the Zoo Fall folks if there's, you know, an ungodly emergency to provide care? It's just they won't be the first line of defense?
Correct. And in addition to that, remember, it's a district-wide program, but the campus that will be housed on is Hillcrest. So, you know, God forbid something happens. Use Franklin Park, for example. In Franklin Park, we are still going to follow our protocols, even, you know, which is our nurses get involved, 911 is called, you know, paramedics are called, whomever is needed is called. Those folks are there for, almost like your home doctor, your general practitioner. That's the kind of services that they provide. So in answer to your question, as obviously they're helpful, and if they're there, they're going to provide help, but in most cases, they likely won't be there if something happens in a gym class on a playground, because they're located only on one campus and only certain times and for certain hours.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure they weren't precluded.
Yeah. Good question.
Sammy? Any questions? Nishita? Any questions? Lori? Dr. Hopkins?
No, I'm good.
Walter?
No questions.
John, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Tsai?
Yes.
Mr. Grippo?
Yes.
Dr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Mr. Shabon?
Yes.
Ms. Singh?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And now we are on to comments from the public. Five minutes per speaker, any topic. Can I have a motion to open public comment? Motion to move. Motion by Nishita, seconded by Sammy. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public comment is now open. If you are remote, please press *5 so you are in the queue, and you can speak on any
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Ellen Rubin. I'm happy to be back. It's been a couple of months. I hope everybody is doing well. I'm sure you're all... It's only about another month, right? Until the big day, a little bit more, so I'm sure you're all working very, very hard. I have to tell you, prior to the time that I was here, maybe about a few months ago, I had been at a Board of Education meeting. I think that was over at the high school before you all moved. And I heard an administrator say at that particular time, it must have been 2020, and he started... He was talking about the fact that there was systemic racism in the schools, and so there needs to be a systemic change. And I'm sure everybody's been working on that. One reason why I came is because I don't know if any of this involves members of the community who are not employed, you know, just would be interested in finding out a little bit more and maybe having a participatory role in it, if that's possible. I guess I would like to know more about this... And what would be included. Oh, I'm getting a new one? All right. This one better work. Okay. All right. I have to hold this one. Is that it? It's very hard for me to come up and talk about this, but I will do it. Most of my school years were in the 1950s. They started a little bit before, and they ended a little bit after. We never learned very much about slavery, about racism, about how people were treated. We learned very, very little about it. And that kind of stayed with me. It bothered me, but you didn't speak up or say anything in those particular times. When they talked about black people in the country versus white people, you needed to memorize statistics. For instance, a black person was considered 3/5ths the value of a white person. That's what you learned. You learned fractions. If you said 3/4, you were wrong. If you said 1/2, you were wrong. These are the things that we had to learn. It's pretty sad. There was nothing mentioned about race riots, Ku Klux Klans, lynchings, slave ships from Africa, the slavery and the treatment of black people. It was taught in the most rudimentary way. And that kind of stayed with me. So I know that there are changes, and I'm very happy that there are changes. But at the same point, I am also a little bit concerned about what exactly is included within those changes. You know, I read a great deal about these type of things, and also, obviously, there are school systems all over the country, so there's considerable difference between ways some schools do things and the way other schools. And because I bring this up, it's not because I believe or feel that the Franklin Township system is doing that. It's only because I'm aware of it. I'm just aware of it. I know that there are beliefs that if you're white, you're a white nationalist. I know that there are. That doesn't sit very well with me because when I was young, when I was young, people like myself weren't considered white, really. Because in order to be considered white, you had to be pure. In order to be pure, you had to be Christian. I'm not Christian. So it was really only the dominant majority religion that could be considered white and therefore a white nationalist. So, you know, as we move further, there are other terms, there are other terms. People of color. Can you define that? Can that really be defined? Years ago, years ago, I knew people well before, well before this became a political topic that said it's better to check off "other" or something of that, that line. Rather, they, it led to, in certain circumstances, a feeling that they, they might move, they may be able to, in certain industries, move ahead faster. So I, I just, I'm wondering how, how this is all defined. There are many people whose skin is darker than mine, but they're Caucasian. They're Caucasian. They have a European background. And yet, they could call themselves anything they want. There are, the majority of, the entire, as I see it, the social justice has to evolve around the group of people that have suffered the most. And those are the descendants of people who were brought here as slaves. And...
Ma'am, I apologize. Your time is up.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay. I think you've gotten the main idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No one else. Last, the president, I will close the public session. So, second.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Dr. Hopkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments are closed. Dr. Ravalli, would you like to answer?
Well, sure. I see Mr. Dr. Longren is already providing a card, and I was going to suggest that he is definitely the person to speak with. You can learn more about our Equity Action Plan through Dr. Longren and Mr. Plummer, who was our supervisor at Equity and Inclusion, who works with Dr. Longren. And Dr. Longren is our Insistent Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. Our plan is also online, and specific action steps the district is taking are also detailed in that plan, so. But I would encourage those folks who want to learn more about the Equity Action Plan that Dr. Longren spoke about, that I think you referenced when you heard the gentleman speaking, that was Dr. Longren who presented that a while back. And you can learn more about the specific action steps and the progress we've made toward, toward those action steps by speaking with him and, and/or Mr. Plummer, so. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. And now we're on to good of the order. Anything, Nishita? Lori? Dr. Hopkins?
I'm good.
Walter?
Just real quick, want to send special prayer and speed of recovery for President, who is missing today, Nancy. I think Vice President did a great job in, in her behalf, but we're definitely keeping her in prayer and asking her for, praying for a speed of recovery. Just a quick quote. "The way people treat you is a statement about who they are as a human being. It is not a statement about you." Continue to enjoy this hot, hot summer. We will be back in the building and real soon, but in the meantime, continue to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
I have one thing. I just wanted to point out that there was an article about the most diverse communities in New Jersey on NJ.com. We unfortunately were not number one, but we were number two. So Franklin is a, you know, a place that, you know, it's in our statement, and it's true in, in reality, so.
Thank you. Sammy?
Just want to echo Walter's statements that Nancy's in our thoughts and prayers were wishing for happy, for full recovery, and you did a great job, Arteman. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bill?
Just a couple of things. I took time to visit Camp SOAR two weeks ago, S-O-A-R, and the YMCA camp at Colonial Park, and many of our schoolchildren, these are all school-related comments I'm going to make, by the way. Many of our schoolchildren are attending that, that Y camp, and it's really a great model. And thanks Dr. Ravalli for his participation with some of the schools, and Bob Von Lockhart really served a lot of kids. Reminder, that August 2 is National Night Out, and there'll be activities on a municipal property, including some of our schoolkids, and there'll be music presentations at the gazebo, and also the food bank. If you haven't stopped at the food bank, I would recommend it to see the outpouring of people during these economic times. Again, many of them are schoolchildren, because I am there a couple of days a week, and I meet many of the families. And there's a food drop on August 4 at the Police Center on Hamilton Street. Cars line up in the street, cars line up at the food bank. So if you know people in town who are in need, many, many of our schoolchildren's families are participating in the work of the Franklin Food Bank. It's really very moving to, to see. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, meetings are adjourned. Have a great night.